Have no votes going on. This is strictly informational with that. Administrator, if you would please like to proceed.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the fourth budget workshop for the proposed 2024 budget. Last week, we kind of changed some order around and you did hear from the highway department regarding the detail of the five-year plan for roads, the maintenance and preservation program, and you have been provided that information. Unfortunately, today, we have no one available from the highway department. Unfortunately, some illness has taken hold out there and we have almost all of our administration staff and our supervisors are out. And so I will be taking any questions and if I don't know the answer, we'll take it down and get the responses back to you. We do have some follow-up from last week about that presentation and we are working on those responses. One of the things you'd ask for is that presentation electronically, and that was sent last week to all the commissioners, but there were some other questions and so we're working on that detail to provide a better explanation for the commission on some of those questions. But that was focusing on the maintenance and preservation program and the five-year plan by roads by year. Today's presentation is going to be going through the road and bridge fund budget and also the highway capital fund and those proposed budgets. And then kind of high level over the five-year countywide CIP. And then we also have at the end, and I printed out the presentations for you, there are a couple of things at the end of the presentation. Several commissioners have asked some things to be added for discussion by the commission from a budgetary standpoint, and so we'll be getting to those two at the end of the meeting. So with that, I'm just going to dig into the road and bridge if I bring up the presentation. So this is the organizational chart for the county and so we'll be talking about the highway department, road and bridge department. We kind of co-mingle the names, but we have 32 full-time employees within the highway department. So that's 6% of the countywide full-time employees. As we talked about last week, this is an area that we have some challenges in with vacancies. So right now, they have about five vacancies full-time. We do have a new staff member that's starting the first of the year, but that's about 16% being vacant within that department and has certainly created some challenges. As we look at the road and bridge fund budget, what you see here on the chart is the proposed budget is $16.1 million and you see the adopted budgets for '21, '22, and '23. There is a significant increase between '23 and '24. It's a 29% increase. That's reflective of the project for the Stockdale Bridge, which is about $3.5 million of a project that we will be doing construction of that in 2024. And we're very pleased to share that we have been successful in acquiring a grant to do that project in the amount of $3.2 million. So you'll see the operating budget, which does include the construction project of $13.1 million and reserves are $2.9 million. As we look at the funding sources for the road and bridge fund, you'll see that again, the $16.1 million of resources available, we'll break them out by category. The first one there on the top, and again, the pie chart on the left kind of breaks it out by the category of revenues. So 14.9% of the road and bridge fund budget comes from a direct allocation from the general sales tax. We also receive sales tax when people buy vehicles. They also receive the SIR tax on property for commercial property. We do have our own mill levy for road and bridge. That's about 26% of the revenue. Now, the commission may recall that when we set the mill levy this year for 2024, due to growth and assessed valuations, there was a rollback in the mill levy. It was rolled back 6%, which is .004. And so the mill levy for road and bridge for 2024 is 0.0657, which is, even though it's a reduction in the mill levy because of growth and assessed valuation, even with the rollback, it does increase the revenue about $300,000 compared to 2023. You also see that we receive fuel tax when we all buy fuel at the pump station, small amount of interest income. The grant, the 19.9% of grant for revenue is the grant to the $3.2 million for the Stockdale Bridge. We have some miscellaneous income and then we certainly have our reserves. And so the pie chart is one way to show the information. The table on the right will then actual show you actuals for each year, '21, '22, our estimate for '23, and our proposed for '24. As we look at the operating expenditures for the road and bridge fund, they total $13.1 million. You see 20% of that is in personnel, 40% of it is in contractual, commodities are 10%, capital is 29%, and transferring out of the road and bridge fund into the general fund is 1%. So the pie chart gives you a visual and the chart on the right will give you the actual numbers. And so you see actual expenditures by category from 2020, '21, '22, are estimated for '23, and proposed in '24. So we're going to focus on '23 estimate to '24 proposed. And so you'll see that personnel is up to $2.6 million. Yes?
Just a quick question. On that proposed, that doesn't include this new amount that we added the other day where we moved it from 4% overall to 5%, does it?
I think this one does, yes. It's been adjusted. We did do that. Kudos to our budget team over the weekend and late last week, once the commission had given consensus last Thursday, Wednesday, we've been changing numbers.
Oh, great.
But I would also, and we'll talk about that. So yes, as you all know, what we have in the proposed budget now is 5% cost of living adjustment for all non-sworn personnel. However, in addition, in the road and bridge fund for the operation division, we have added additional money for personnel above the 5%. This is an area that we've had very difficulty in recruiting and retaining, and so the plan is to raise the starting salary and also make adjustments to our existing personnel above that. So in that particular division, their personnel budget went up about 8% as opposed to 5%. In contractual, you see it jumps from a little over $4 million to $5.2 million. In contractual is our obligation to the road and bridge, special road and bridge districts and the municipalities. So of that 5.2 million, basically 4.7 of it goes out to outside agencies in Clay County for their roads. Commodities are up from $600,000 to $1.3 million. That's an increase for materials and supplies for our preservation programs, for markings of the roads, along with coal patch and just the materials that we need that our staff does in our maintenance of roads. And then you see the capital obviously has a huge increase from 540 to 3.7, and the majority of that increase is due to the Stockdale Bridge. We have a new expenditure category with a transfer out of $115,000. This is the transfer out of the road and bridge fund into the general fund to help support the new countywide GIS department. So as we look at the operating budget of $13.1 million, this pie chart actually kind of shows you by category of different breakout of sort of divisions on how the money is allocated. So you'll see that 36%, a little over 36%, goes to special road districts. So again, want that to sink in, over a third of our budget of road and bridge goes out to outside agencies, to the municipalities and the road districts. We have 28% next year is for bridges and culverts, and again, that's because of the Stockdale Bridge. Our road maintenance, our own road maintenance budget is 24% of the budget. And then you see the other categories, benefits and insurance for all our employees, administration costs are only 3.5%, and then you see the debt and then the transfer out. And I have a question.
Okay.
He was mesmerized by the pie chart.
Thank you.
Quick question, maybe more of an explanation for people that may be watching at home or be watch this later. Special road districts, over a third of our budget goes to special road districts. Could you explain what special road districts are and why we're paying over a third to that?
I'll be happy to do that. I actually have some slides that really dive into a little bit more about that because, you know, it is a substantial cost within our budget and is continuing to increase on an annual basis, and so it does create challenges for us. But yes, I certainly will do that. So great lead-in because here is example of the road and bridge fund. So this dates back several, several years ago when the county made some changes. So special road districts are established and citizens actually vote who live in those road districts on their board members that sit on their special road district boards. And then, so what happened is several years ago, when the county pursued going to a sales tax and reducing back property tax, we ended up in litigation with, with agencies, municipalities, and special road districts. So the obligation that we have here is a result of that settlement and that particular lawsuit. And so just so understand what the settlement is, that the county is to pay, based on the assessed valuation within a road district or within a municipality, .14 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. So basically, .14 mills to them based on their assessed valuation. Well, again, I go back and remind you, our mill levy countywide for road and bridge is 0.0697. So our mill levy doesn't even cover the, it's not the same amount that we're obligated to pay under this debt, under this settlement agreement. So we have to subsidize that with money coming from the general sales tax. There is also a part of the agreement that a portion of sales tax is given to those entities based upon their assessed valuation, like the first $2 million less TIF. And that's about, proposed next year, about $930,000 of sales tax based on the settlement tied to sales tax and their assessed valuation. So it is, it is a pretty extensive amount that this county pays to special road districts and municipalities. So what you have here in this chart shows you sort of historically, right? In 2019, our obligation was $3.1 million. In 2024, we're proposing it's $4.7 million. Just between 2023 and 2024, you know, we're seeing about a 13% increase. Over the past five years, what we've averaged is about a 9% annual increase in this financial obligation. And it is something that we really need to take a hard look at because, you know, it's not really sustainable with our mill levy that we have, and so that means our, our general sales tax is going to continue to have to help subsidize this. And so this is really, really hard if somebody's looking at online and certainly even on your screen or even on their printout. It's really hard to read, but you see here all the road districts, Gladstone has one, Clay Como, Liberty, Carney, Pleasant Valley, North Kent City, and Excelsior Springs. So those are the special road districts. And then you see cities, Gladstone, Clay Como, Liberty, Carney, all the way down, are the cities within the county that are receiving funds. Kansas City, Missouri is one of them. And so if you look at the pie chart, and I know it's very hard to read because we have small jurisdictions who get a small amount, but you can see that Kansas City, Missouri is getting 29% of the revenue, the total revenue that's going out based on this obligation, followed by, you know, Liberty's road district. Now, talking to many of the cities and, and some of the road districts, with some of the road districts, they simply partner with their cities and just give those funds to the cities, and they manage and utilize those funds within, in their projects within those roads. So the county is contributing to the roads that our citizens drive within the incorporated areas of these municipalities and road districts. But it is a challenge for us.
So those restrictions that are put on us by the lawsuit?
Correct.
Are those in perpetuity? Is there any end to that?
I don't believe there's any end. In fact, I believe there is a change in the sales tax amount because it was, the formula was set for a certain period of time and it is projected to change in a couple of years, I believe, and goes up.
Yeah, I think it goes to one and a half million.
Oh, auditor, would you go ahead and just identify yourself for the audio record?
Yeah, Victor Hurlberg, County Auditor. So yeah, it goes up to one and a half million, I believe, 2031. So after TIF, depending on what our TIF withholding rate, it would be less than that amount. So yeah, it's, but the 14 cents is in the agreements and I don't think there is an end to those.
And so is there any solution on our side to help fix these books?
Well, I think, you know, I've had some general discussion with city managers, not yet the road districts. And I think there's been discussion in the past with the county about trying to work out some other fair, equitable program, but we'd have to have everybody sign off on it. Because we also have some cities here, you know, we've been approached by the city of Smithville, who is not in this because they were not part of the process and weren't in the litigation, and now that we're a charter, you know, they're not really eligible to be part of this. So we have some inconsistencies across the county. So I do think, you know, there is an opportunity to open up some dialogue with the agencies to see what, what can we do? How can we be fair across, you know, all the agencies in the county and to the county itself? Because we also have roads we need to maintain and unfortunately, this takes over a third of our revenue to do that.
Yeah, and is there anything, I know our attorney's not here today, but is there anything litigation-wise that we can go back and have the courts look at this again or?
You know, I think Councilor Graham and I've had some discussions about that and I know there's been some preliminary discussions about how to work through this. I think the challenge in the past has been that some of the agencies that received the largest amount of funds really weren't interested in sitting down and talking to us.
Sure.
But, you know, there are new people all the time that come into office and in positions, and so I certainly think it's worthwhile to have those discussions.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this issue before we go forward? Seeing none, proceed, please.
Thank you. So in addition to the road and bridge fund, we also have the capital use tax fund for highway and bridge. And so again, what you see here on the chart is the adopted budget in '21, '22, and '23, and the proposed for '24. There is an increase in the proposed budget of about 25% going from 5.4 to 6.8. You'll see that increase is both in the operating and also in the reserves. And so from the capital use tax, where the revenue comes from is, almost 57% of it is the use tax, right? The internet sales. As you all know, we get internet sales and we divide that up between three different use tax funds. The general use tax fund, the highway and bridge, and then also parks. And so 2024 proposes that after TIF obligation, that 38% of the use tax revenue goes to highway and bridge, 38% goes to general capital, and then 17% of it is going to parks. In addition, in the capital fund for highway and bridges, we have about 41% of the revenue is from reserves. And then we have a transfer in of 1.4%. And again, this is that transfer from the TIF fund. You have seen this in other funds that we've talked about, our projected excess TIF revenue that will be available at the end of 2023, and we're allocating that back to the appropriate funds. On the expenditure side, it's $6.3 million is being proposed. And so you'll see that 13% of it is contractual, 68% of it is in commodities, and 19% of it is in capital. And so contractual is our debt obligation, so it's a transfer out of here to the debt service. In commodities, that is where we fund our, basically our preservation program that you heard a lot about last week with the asphalt, the chip and seal, the micro-surfacing and culvert repairs. And then capital will be some equipment that is planned for next year. So when we add both funds together, because both are dedicated to our roads and bridges, you'll see that we're spending a total of $19.4 million on road and bridge. That is 16% of the countywide operating budget. And 70% of that will come from the road and bridge fund, and 30% of it will come from the capital use tax fund for highway and bridges. The pie chart on the right will show you the allocation of the expenditures by both funds. And so you'll see that personnel is 14%. Again, contractual is 31%. In contractual is again, our obligation to road district along with our debt service. Commodities is 29%, and that is our maintenance and prevention program. Capital is going to be projects. It's also our bridge, but also equipment. And then the transfer is that small transfer out of the road and bridge fund to the general fund to support the highway or to support the GIS department. Any questions on the numbers so far? Okay. And again, I apologize that we do not have staff available today to talk about their accomplishments and their goals. And so you see here on the chart, some of the accomplishments that they had listed for 2023. One is developing the five-year CIP plan, updating the website with information, and also being successful in receiving the federal funding for the Stockdale Road Bridge. With regard to safety and well-being, they've established a safety committee and programs for staff and opportunities for employees to be in the health and wellness initiatives. On the infrastructure side, 75% of the bridges have a sufficiency rating of 50 or greater. They have replaced two failing bridges and we have contracts and work being done on three additional bridges. They've replaced two box culverts and 17 culvert pipes, and 78% of the roads that have pavement condition index of excellent or fair. 14.7% of the paved lane miles were resurfaced this past year preserved, and 98% of the gravel roads received an annual maintenance. For 2024, a couple of items that they have highlighted for goals. One is to deploy some mobile technology on our equipment so we can optimize efficiency in the field. We're again continuing, and this is a theme across the county, is utilizing data more effectively to determine not only costs, but how do we operate more efficiently? They're also working on lists of critical projects and the scope of that work, and working on forecasting, which is, you've seen that last week, and we're continuing to build upon that. And also, and I think we heard this from Commissioner Johnson last week, is how do we expand more on external communication on what road and bridge does and what they are doing, what they're planning to do, and how do we keep our citizens informed, especially when it comes to projects? On economic opportunity, one of the things we've talked about internally and working with the planning department is taking a look at our road impact fees for development that is within the county. And some of our discussion last week is how do we partner with some of our municipalities who are doing significant development on our boundaries and are impacting our local county roads that feed right into those subdivisions and how do we work with them on some impact fees? On employer of choice, we're talking again about the pay structure and the additional funding that we're proposing. We're also recommending to add an engineer position, a civil engineer, not only working with highway, but also in the planning as we look at new development, and then continue our safety and training for our employees. With regard to infrastructure, again, we're increasing the street maintenance and preservation program by 10%. We're also working on economic growth and how we can plan for that. We're also building on our equipment replacement schedule and fine-tuning that more than help us with our forecasting and our planning and looking at metrics on our equipment, and certainly expanding the use of GIS mapping to help not only with what we do internally and how we do our work, but also again, better communication to our citizens and make that available on the website. And I think I have a question.
You do have a question. Commissioner Lawson.
Yeah, a couple of things. When they're talking about county vehicles, are they talking about like regular cars or are they talking about like heavy road equipment and stuff of that nature?
I'm sorry?
Or a combination? Are they, when, in this infrastructure item, it talks about, let's see?
The life cycle?
Yeah, vehicles, determine metrics for life cycle program. Are they talking about their heavy equipment that they maintain the road with?
We're talking about all our equipment, right?
Okay.
Because they, you know, the vehicle maintenance does light vehicle maintenance for all our vehicles, you know, for planning and for facilities. And so really, what we're wanting to do is do a more in-depth vehicle equipment replacement. So it's not just our heavy equipment, but literally all the way down to when we're talking about mowers and pieces of equipment and do a better job of planning those out and life cycle and, you know, trying to forecast what do we think, you know, the increased prices are going to be, you know, at the end of their life cycle.
Right.
Yeah. And we'll also be exploring, there are ways to actually set up some funding mechanisms to do that from a budgetary standpoint on an annual basis. And so when you have to buy those equipment or you lease those equipments, there's not a big spike in costs because you budgeted an amount annually and set up sort of a sinking fund. And so we're going to look at that. Other agencies use that and it kind of helps from those peaks and valleys from a budgetary standpoint. So we're going to look at all of that to see how we can be more efficient with that.
Okay. Well, you know, something, the other day when Carl was talking and Terry was talking, maybe I misunderstood what they said, but I thought that, that going forward, they were going to start using outside contractors more and our people would be doing things like the brush cleaning culverts, you know, all of those kinds of maintenance stuff. And then all, they were going to concentrate more on for the upgrades of roads. That was going to be through a outside contractor.
Well, definitely next year, that is planned, especially in the chip and seal program, but I don't believe the intent is that we get completely out of the chip and seal business. But it doesn't mean that we can't streamline and maybe not have as much equipment because we'll supplement that contractually. So again, I think we did that this year because we had equipment breakdown.
Right.
And we wanted to keep the program and meet our obligations. But, and planning to do that again next year. However, I think now we'll have two years under about. Again, I think we need to look at the data and we need to look at the costs.
Absolutely.
And see what that looks like and what is the best value for the county.
Okay. One other thing I've got to share with you, and Diana, this isn't a course directed at you, you don't have a dog in the fight, so to speak. But I got a call from three different guys in the last maybe week or so. These were all gentlemen who had left our employ. And, and had one person called, I would have thought sour grapes, you know, not gonna, just probably had a bad experience, wasn't doing his job good, and he got fired, so now he wants to crybaby about it. But in the conversation with these three men, it was like I was talking to the same guy. Some of the things that they said were that they really liked working at the highway department. And I said, so if you liked working, why'd you quit? And they all, to a man, said, well, a couple of things. We felt that we were not valued, that we wanted to learn more. We weren't asking for more money. Nobody was asking for more money. That's the killer. They were all asking for more responsibility. You know, teach me how to do this, this particular machine or the, you know, the brush cleaning or whatever it might have been. They wanted to know those different machines and they were denied that. They were told, no, you can't do it. One of the gentlemen said that it was, that was his problem, but then in addition, he had a, he and his wife both worked daycare, the usual problem you have with daycare. They needed to pick up the little girl at a particular time. And with the way we got, they got off of work, he would be a little late. So he asked, simply asked, look, I'll take vacation time. If I can just leave, when we come in, like if they come in at, say, four, and they, they quit at 4:30. He said, we just sit around and jaw for 30 minutes, you know, we're not doing anything. So he felt like if he left for that half hour, it would be no, no hurt to anybody, you know, it wouldn't take anything away from the county. But he was willing to give up his vacation just to leave. It ended up during the week about an hour, one hour, all totaled, that he had to leave to pick up the child. They told him, no, if it didn't work out good the way it was... They told him, no, if it didn't work out good the way it was, then he could quit. And so he did, you know. And, and I, I sit here and I look at this, you know, that we're developing opportunities, blah, blah, blah. I feel like in a way with a lot of this stuff, that they ought to get the Pulitzer Prize for fiction, because what is said here is not what I see in practical application. You know, just like checking the roads after they've been done by an outside vendor. Nobody goes out, and, and I've talked to a couple of people out there, nobody goes out and checks that out. They're just, the road is just taken care of. And, you know, they talk about getting the engineering position, and that was one of the things that the engineer could do. Well, you know, it looks like they're almost top-heavy out there now. So bring in another person to, to go out and plug the street. That's something that their manager should be doing. He's got more experience in that job than probably anybody in this county has in their job. He knows roads and bridges inside out. That guy's been around forever. So that money that you would put out for an engineer could be used, you know, and I'm glad they're, they're giving some money to the guys, but it could be used in some other manner. It could be used to fix some of the gravel roads we've got. But I just, you know, that, that bothers me. You talk about how you're trying to develop things. I haven't talked to everybody that quit, but these guys voluntarily called me. Now, I'm sure somebody out there gave them my number, or they wouldn't have been able to hunt me down like a dog. But it's just the idea that they did, and they wanted to share that experience. So I'm sharing it with you, and I think that's something going forward that I'd like to see you keep your thumb on, that, that we have to value the people who work for us. They do a better job, they stay longer. We're not put in a position where we don't have enough staff to do what needs to be done for our citizens. So anyway, I just had to comment on that.
Any further comments before we continue the presentation? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Withington.
Those same concerns that Commissioner Lawson just brought up, those have been shared with me also. And I think those need to be addressed if we're going to be considered an employer of choice. I mean, you know, the guy left 30 minutes early for a total of an hour a week to go pick up his, his child from school or wherever it was. And, you know, if we're going to tell somebody that, you know, I get it, there's two sides to every story. But if we're going to tell somebody they can't go pick up their kid, that's, that's not, that's not an employer of choice. We need to be flexible, and it was at the end of the shift when they were all just sitting around. So that's something we need to, you know, we need to work on. And had we made those guys feel valued, they may not have voted to be unionized, so.
Further discussion before we continue with the presentation? I see none, so Administrator?
Sure, thank you. So this is a document that you have seen. I would really call this the sort of the change in fund balance, and this is only on the road and bridge fund. And this one takes a little bit more explanation. So you'll see that the beginning of fund balance estimated for 2024 for road and bridge fund is $4.5 million. But then you'll see, which you've not seen in any of our other funds, a restricted reserve of $2.3 million, which means we have funds available of 2.1. So I want to step back and talk about that restricted amount of 2.3. As Commissioner is aware, several years ago, the county issued certificates of participation, bond money. And so part of those bond monies were used to do road improvements and specifically bridges. We were successful in the first couple of bridges that we did were in the BRO program, which is through the state in which it is, you know, anywhere around a 90% reimbursement on those costs to do the bridge. So we took the bond money and did a bridge, received BRO money and received it back. And so that's that $2.3 million. Now, I have stood up here before, and I tell directors all the time, you can't spend money more than once. This breaks that rule because we've restricted it because we're holding it, because we continue to apply annually for a BRO program to replace another bridge. When we're successful, we'll use the 2.3, we'll get reimbursed back, and then we'll continue the cycle until there's no more bond money left to do bridges. So that's kind of why it's restricted, is because we specifically don't want it to get, I just say, you know, combined with everything and get used, and then we don't have those funds again. So we have applied for a BRO project, and we've not heard yet whether our project has been accepted or not. So I wanted to explain why that restrictive reserve is sitting there. As you look at revenues, operating revenues for 2024 for the road and bridge fund, we're estimating to be $11.5 million. Our operating expenditures are 13.1. So that is a net of expenditures over revenues for the year of negative 1.5 million, leaving a fund balance of, funds available of $606,000, which is basically 5% of expenditures. If you add back in the restricted reserve, then the ending fund balance would be 2.9, again, 23% of expenditures. But as we've talked about, you know, historically, our trends, looking at trends, our operating expenditures will be below the 13 million. And so we look at trend analysis of 10.7 in expenditures, then you'll see that actually our operating revenues are very close, if not a little bit higher than our operating trend expenditures of about $785,000, which would then leave us with, you know, a fund balance of 2.9 million, which would be 28%. Or you add in the restricted reserves, and that's 5.3, which is 50%. But again, we're holding that, that restricted reserve to do bridge work. So are there any questions about this particular information? Because it is a little different. We've never really showed you a fund where we have set aside in restricted reserves for a specific purpose.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, please proceed.
So this is taking a look at the road and bridge fund and doing a five-year forecast. So you see, you know, actuals and fund balance. You see the 2023 estimate, you see the 2024 proposed, which has, you know, revenues again slightly over expenditures. This is using trend analysis on our expenditures. And you will see though, on this one, which is not what you've seen on other funds, that it looks like fund balance continues to grow. Now, I would say that this needs to be reevaluated because if you look under the assumptions, and we've used the same assumptions for every fund when it comes to revenue projections and expenditures. However, in this particular fund on expenditures, if you look at contractual and commodities, it only has a 3% expenditure growth. Well, as we talked about our special road districts, we're averaging 9% increase in that category alone on an annual basis. So we need to go back and adjust that and do this forecast because you won't see that fund balance grow like it is projected here. Because again, historically, what we've done is determined what are our assumptions and carried that out countywide. But some of our funds have some anomalies, and this particular fund has an anomaly with the special road districts, which will change the look of this particular graph. Question?
It's my button, I didn't quite get pressed. Go ahead.
I apologize. I'm going to go back. Something just hit my head. On the, on that money that we give like to Kansas City, are they, their feet held to the fire to make sure that they use that money in Clay County?
Well, they are obligated to do that. They are also supposed to, road districts are supposed to submit to us their budgets, their, their reports. You've seen a couple of them come through on your agendas, and I would defer to our county auditor about the municipalities and what they do to validate to us that it is spent in the county.
Good.
Commissioner, are you, are you finished?
I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Withington, it's your turn.
I can, I can attest that Clay, that Kansas City is, they, they use some of that money to, to improve North Brighton from Harvin to...
Oh, okay.
It was, it was no, there was no, it was just, you know, two lanes and a ditch on both sides. They improved that. Then they used part of that for 210.
Oh, okay.
So they, Kansas City is using that money mostly in the older neighborhoods of southwest Clay County.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Auditor, did you have anything else to add?
I just might, Victor Hurlberg, Clay County, I just might add a, just a clarification, just so we're all aware. But Kansas City's unique in that because they're like multi-county, of course, they actually can't, and they don't have a road district per se, but they're still a party to the settlements. And so they still enjoy the, you know, 14, 14 cents, and they're part of the sales tax payment. But I just, you know, throw out that they're a little different in that sense, so.
I see no further questions or comments, so if you'd like to proceed.
All right. If there aren't any other questions or comments about the road and bridge fund, then I'd like to move into the five-year capital improvement plan. So just for 2024, we're just talking about 2024's CIP program. It's a little over $24 million out of the total operating budget. And the funding sources for that, you see on the left-hand side in the pie chart. Again, you see the capital use tax for parks is 12%, highway is 27% of the revenue, capital general is 18%. And then you see that we have some expenses that are capital in other funds, like the general fund, the park fund, the road and bridge fund, the airport fund. You'll see ARPA, again, a lot of our, again, finishing up our ARPA projects, and then the grant at 13%, which again is primarily the Stockdale Bridge replacement. And so when you look at program type, the $24 million, again, you'll see personnel at the top is 2%. And again, I remind you, typically, we do not have personnel in our capital, except in the park capital fund. We do pay for our trail maintenance staff out of that, so that's 2%. Vehicle and equipment is 12%. Facilities, work we do on facilities, 9%. Our roads are 20% of that budget. Our bridges are 15% of that budget, and our stormwater is 23% of our budget. So if you add those three together, because they're all really related to roads and bridges, 58% of the capital program for 2024 is going to be spent on roads and bridges. Then you see 1% is on miscellaneous infrastructure. We have 6% in technology, 11% is on debt, and 1% is on leases. And that lease is really our lease to the Corps of Engineers. So the next few slides are really trying to summarize for you the 2024 CIP program by category. How much is allocated for that? What's the funding source, and what department is the lead on that? So in this particular chart, you see two categories. One is road maintenance. In 2024 is $4.8 million. And so you see there, based on the seal coating or the micro-surfacing that you heard last week, asphalt, chip seal, pavement marking, and then gravel maintenance. So a total of 4.8 million. Those funding sources come from the capital use fund for highway and out of the road and bridge fund. For projects, we have the bridges. Not only do we have the replacement of the Stockdale Bridge, which is a grant coming out of the road and bridge fund, but also the design of the old 210 highway bridge, and that is being funded out of the capital use highway fund. We look at stormwater. This is pretty much the funding source for all of these is our ARPA funding. There's about $5.6 million in these various stormwater projects that are in various stages, either from being designed under construction or finalizing design and coming to the commission in the near future to award those construction contracts. For technology, we have about $1.3 million. Most of the funding comes from the capital use general of sales tax fund. There's a little bit out of the general fund. So you see by departments, it's pretty much in the courts, along with countywide IT department and a small project for the auditor's office. That totals about $1.3 million. For our facilities, we have a little over $2 million planned. The funding comes from either the, the park capital use tax fund or the general, general capital use tax fund. And you see there the list of those projects. They range anywhere from security enhancements to replacing aging equipment, whether you're talking about HVAC, or you're talking about restroom renovations, parking lot renovations. And this one, I apologize, it again, it's probably a little hard to read. But this is equipment and vehicles. And so you'll see that the funding sources are anywhere from the park capital use tax fund to the highway capital use tax fund, to the general capital use tax fund, and to the park fund itself. There's a total of $2.8 million for equipment replacement. And the various departments will receive that equipment, whether it's parks, road and bridge, the sheriff's office, facilities, public administrator's office, and the parks department. For infrastructure, we have about $340,000. This is out of the park capital use tax fund, either stormwater projects or improvements and maintenance to aspects of the golf course, along with some asphalt maintenance repair. Then we have personnel, as we've talked about, which is our trail maintenance personnel for about $546,000, which again, comes out of the capital park use tax fund. We have debt service for paying our debt obligations, especially our debt right now, annual payment about $2.5 million. And so you'll see that comes from our use tax, whether it's park, highway, or general. The general fund does a small transfer to debt service. And then we have debt service coming out of the airport fund for $32,000. That is the last payment for the debt obligation for the airport will be in 2024. And then we have the lease payment, lease category. Again, this comes out of the park use tax, and this is for the Smithville Lake with the Corps of Engineers. So that is 2024's plan. You approve the budget. Those are the things that will be included and approved in the budget. This next documents are really the five-year plan, so 2025 to 2029. What we're proposing is $92.3 million in capital over the next five years. And so you see the potential funding sources on the pie chart to the left. Again, our capital use tax, whether it's for parks, highway, or their general. Then we also will have some funding proposed out of the general fund, the road and bridge fund, the airport fund, and then outside funding. And so when I say this is potential funding, those are our requests. And so a lot of that outside funding, we've not received verification on. Obviously, we're five years out, but we're planning on it. And the majority of that is anticipating BRO money for our bridges. And so when you look at how is that allocated, that $92 million over five years, again, personnel and operations is 2.7% of it. Again, funding our equipment and vehicle replacement, doing work on our facilities, roads and bridges, 33% on roads, 25% on bridges. And so adding those together, that's about 59% of the five-year plan would be on roads and bridges. Infrastructure, technology, about 6%, debt, again, 13%, and then our lease obligation over five years. The next chart looks a little bit like what you've seen, but we've tried to combine it, and it gets a little, little busy. But what we wanted to do is keep those same categories and show you the projects, and then show you the years that they're proposed to be funded in the five-year plan, what that funding source is, and the total. So we start out with our personnel and trail maintenance. And so you'll see what we're forecasting the next five years goes along with all our other forecasting. And so that would come out of the park capital use tax fund, basically $2.5 million. When we look at infrastructure, you'll see the projects we have planned, what year they are proposed to be, our estimated cost for those, and that's about $645,000 out of the park use tax fund. This one's a little harder to read. This is facilities, and we have a lot of facilities that we need to maintain. And so we're proposing here is a total of $3.5 million on our facilities, and you see the various projects proposed and what year they're proposed to be funded in, and the funding source. proposed to be funded in and the funding source that we're proposing to be utilized. Again, a lot of this is simply maintaining what we have, um, and repairing what we have, um, and upgrading. With regard to equipment and vehicles, um, this is about $5.9 million. Again, you will see the proposed pieces of equipment and vehicles, what year they're scheduled to be in. Some of them and some of these projects, you will see dollars in every year. Um, that because, that's our replacement program or that is our maintenance program. So for example, annual patrol vehicles replacements for the sheriff's department is something that we do, uh, every year. For bridges, this is tied to the BRO and, uh, acquiring BRO grant. To do that, our hope is that we are successful in that. Looking at all the bridges that we have scheduled from design and construction, you can see from bridge work, you know, we have about $23 million proposed, uh, to find funding, outside funding to help us with those bridges. Um, there's been some recent discussion about federal funding and also some state funding that may become available when it comes to bridges. And certainly I know from the state, there was discussion about increasing funding for, um, infrastructure primarily in rural areas. And so we're very hopeful that many of our bridges in our rural area will qualify for this proposed funding. As we look at road maintenance, uh, again, this goes to our preservation and maintenance program. Uh, you'll see, again, what we're proposing, those categories you've heard about, um, trying to increase those amounts every year. Um, so over the five-year, we're proposing about 31, um, 31.1 million dollars in road maintenance and preservation. And then you see our debt service schedule. Um, again, over the five years, a little over $12 million is proposed. Lease payments, um, so these are lease payments existing that we have on equipment. Uh, also, it is if we're proposing to purchase new leases for a replacement. Um, none of this really proposes any addition of equipment. These are really just, uh, replacement schedule. And so that's about $7.5 million over the five-year plan. We look at technology. Um, again, you'll see that, again, it could be, uh, in the courtrooms or just across the organization what's planned. Um, but there's a total of about 5.4, almost 5.5 million dollars in technology. This will show you kind of our projection for the use tax fund. And now while we have three different funds, um, we're showing you in totality based on use tax, not by the three different funds. Because depending upon the need, the last couple of years, we have, um, changed the allocation depending on what the funding is for that particular fund. So in this, we stepped back and took a look at it as it's to total. And you'll see that, um, our revenue projections and our expenditures, and, and you'll see expenditures exceed revenue projections in '25, '26, '27, and '28. And you'll see that it actually goes in the negative. Well, we will never bring you a budget that has a negative fund balance. Um, but if you look in 2029, you'll see that the fund balance pumps back up. And so what this really means is we will continue, this five-year plan is looked at every year we do the budget cycle. And so we kind of have to do some smoothing depending on what our revenue forecasts are. Um, and so at the end of the five years, we will say, we will tell you that we have enough money to do what is in the plan. We just may have to reallocate which year some of those projects get done based on our revenue projections. But we wanted to show you in totality what that five-year plan would look like. Any questions on the five-year CIP, any of the projects? I know it's a lot of information. But again, um, I think it's important to realize every year during the budget cycle, not only we do we bring you, when we do '25's budget, we will bring you and talk very detailed about those 20 projects in 2025 and the capital. And we will look at '26, '27, '28, and '29 that's proposed and add 30 to it. So this is something, this is a fluid document. It is a planning document. Um, and so we look at it every year because things do change.
Questions or comments? Seeing none.
All right. So the next thing I'd like to do is, um, add a couple of things that, um, have been asked of me by commissioners to have a little bit more discussion about, um, and some topics. And so we'll just dive in. There's only three, so, um, you know, well, we may be doing really well. The first one is the 5% cost of living adjustment. And so you may recall, last week when we kicked off the, um, the meeting, I proposed to you how to fund that with regard to putting some revenue, um, and counting on some revenue of the new device, 911 device fee, which freed up some money in the general fund. So once you all gave consensus to do that, then the staff has gone back and really, you know, put it all together. And so we wanted to share this with you because the numbers aren't as, as large as we thought they were going to be. So we just wanted to share that. It's still doable and, and you all had given the blessing on that. And so again, the number that you saw today and the numbers going forward that you'll see tomorrow night as a recap will reflect these changes. The second item I would like to talk about is the sheriff's retirement, uh, program and system. So, uh, this one will take a little bit of explanation. Our county constitution is very specific with, um, our off, a couple of our office holders on what their salary is to be. It's tied to, um, um, in the sheriff's case, it is tied to the associate circuit judge's salary for the state. Um, it also in the constitution is very specific that says office holders on the article are considered, that are considered full-time are eligible for all benefits available to all other full-time employees of the county. And so all full-time employees of the county are in two retirement systems. One is loggers and the other one we call SURF, which is County Employee Retirement Fund, I believe. Both of those retirement systems are governed by state statutes. And so the county currently pays 100% of the cost for the employees' retirement into both loggers and to SURF. And what the county pays into SURF for employees is 4% of their salary. Now, the sheriff and the prosecutor both are not eligible to be in the SURF retirement system. Again, this is by state statute. And so the sheriff is not, um, the sheriff is in the Missouri Sheriff's Retirement System and has been in it. Um, and how that has been funded in the past is there were, there were fees that were assessed on various civil and criminal cases uh, that came before the court. So there was no cost to any of the sheriffs to participate in the state sheriff's retirement system. However, those fees were challenged in the court and they were deemed to be unconstitutional. So now the sheriff's retirement system, um, had to find another revenue source to make up the difference for that lost revenue. So that agency has now put into place that sheriffs are going to be required to contribute 5% of their salary after taxes into SURF. Now, they are eligible, current sheriffs are, that are in loggers, are eligible to be in loggers. However, this system has changed that for any new sheriffs going forward, that they will not be able to be in loggers. But, um, our current sheriff, um, this does not apply to him. So he is eligible to still be in loggers and the county is paying that premium, just like we do for all other employees. But the difference is for the sheriff is, he's not eligible to be in the SURF. And so we are paying, the county is paying 4% on all full-time employees into SURF that the sheriff has not been able to have a benefit of. And not necessarily has there been a need in the past because he's been in the sheriff's retirement system at no cost to him. Now, there is a change and the sheriff will be required to contribute 5% of his wages into that. Um, it should also be noted that the prosecutor, um, is also not eligible to be in SURF, uh, under their rules. There is a state retirement system for prosecutors. Under that program, and again, it's governed by state statute, that the prosecutor himself has to contribute after pay, in payroll, 4%. But the county under statute is also required to contribute into his prosecutor retirement system. It's not a percentage of wages. They tell us on an annual basis what is that amount. And so currently, we're paying about 7% of the prosecutor's wages into this retirement system. So come January 1st of 2024, the reality is the sheriff is not getting a benefit that all other county employees are receiving. And under the constitution, it says that you should be eligible to receive the same benefits. So the proposal to the commission for your consideration is, um, to basically give a, a retirement reimbursement to the sheriff. Um, if you did 4%, then that's equal to what is, um, the county pays to employees, uh, for employees into SURF. Um, however, that would leave the sheriff contributing, you know, the delta for him would be 1% of his wages. Uh, because we, the county by statute is required to pay a higher percentage for the prosecutor for his retirement, the commission may want to make the decision to basically reimburse the sheriff the full 5% come January 1st of 2024. Would recommend that it's a reimbursement and, and only because the paperwork that I have seen that has come from the sheriff's retirement system, um, they have structured this that their participants are contributing after-tax dollars so that when they receive their retirement benefit, it's not taxable. So we don't want to cause any tax issues for the sheriff. So we would recommend possibly that this would just be a reimbursement and not be an automatic pay from the county to the sheriff's, uh, retirement fund. But I open that up for discussion to see what the commission's desire is.
Thank you for that explanation. And yeah, the, uh, the last issue you had addressed was one I was wondering about, and that is the taxability of it. Uh, Commissioner Lawson, I believe you were seeking recognition?
Going back to the retirement system, one, one, uh, slide back. Um, so, so today, he pays into the sheriff's retirement system.
No.
No, he doesn't.
He does not. That does not go into effect. It starts January 1st of 2024.
Okay, okay. Uh, so he, he can do, he is doing SURF in loggers today?
He's doing loggers.
Just loggers, okay.
Uh, he is not eligible for SURF. And loggers, there is no cost to any employee. The county absorbs 100% of the contributions into loggers for all employees.
And it says will remain in both loggers and the sheriff's retirement system until they leave office?
Yeah, our current sheriff. And the reason that's in there is because it should be noted that going forward, the Missouri Sheriff's Retirement System, which again is by statute, has changed that any new person who becomes a sheriff will not be eligible to be in loggers. But our sheriff is currently in it and their new rules allow them to be grandfathered in.
Oh, good, okay, okay. And then the 5% that he contributes, it's, let's see, wait a minute. The organization has implemented different funding sources, which include active sheriffs contributing 5% of their salary to the retirement fund. Now, do they, they do that? I mean, it is coming out of their salary. We're not contributing in any way on that. Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay.
If you all say, no, we're not going to do the reimbursement to him, then he is obligated to, um, he's obligated to be in this retirement system and now he is obligated to pay 5% into it after taxes.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. But come 1, 1/1 of '24, then we can pick up the percentage instead of him having to pay it?
Well, what I would suggest is that we would, the, the county would not pay the 5% directly to the retirement system. The county would reimburse the sheriff for his contribution to it. And the reason I say that is because of the whole tax liability issue for him.
Oh, okay.
If we're contributing it, then it would not be, he wouldn't pay taxes on it. And so when he gets his retirement, then he would be ta- paying taxes at that time. And they've structured it that they're paying post, you know, sort of out of their net paycheck, which means that when they retire, it's not taxable because they've already paid taxes on it.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, there's a whole, you know, and again, we're, I'm not a tax attorney by any means. And so we would certainly recommend the, if we, if you choose to do this, we would recommend the sheriff talk to his tax consultant.
Just a point of clarification before I go to Commissioner Johnson. When you're talking about the sheriff being grandfathered in, that is notwithstanding any subsequent elections, intereading elections. So sometimes these changes don't take effect or do take effect depending on whether somebody's, he will be grandfathered in for the duration of his career as sheriff. Is that correct?
That is correct. So it's not, you're right, he is up for reelection. And so they, they would not, as my understanding, they would not count that as, you know, if he's re-elected, that's not a new term and he's not a new sheriff.
That's exactly, I, I, I knew that was, I was pretty sure that was the case, but I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Mine as well, but, um, again, neither of us are tax attorneys. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I completely support this 5% reimbursed. Um, to be clear, uh, the sheriff will be losing 5% of his pay, uh, to this new retirement system that he's required to pay into beginning of January. So I fully support this, but I want to explain, because I think I kind of the one that stirred the horn's nest on this, um, kind of the, the, a little bit more background of this and why I think this is so important. And it's part of actually a bigger picture when it comes to pay and our salary system. Um, particularly as I've looked over recently, the, the pay for our sheriff and our, and our prosecutor, um, and how they are, um, um, not quite as in line with, with, uh, what I think they should be. When I look up some salary surveys of different sheriffs and, and chiefs throughout, not only the region, but, uh, the whole Midwest, um, it was astonishing how far behind our sheriff is in compensation, total compensation, salary as well as total compensation. And if anybody's interested in that, you can go to, uh, the, um, uh, Police Executive Research Forum, PERF, online. You can look them up on a very, very professional, uh, association that, that does this kind of research into policy and, and one of the things that does salary studies, that kind of stuff. Um, you could see how far behind our sheriff really is. And if, if you don't know the difference between a sheriff and a chief of police, a lot of people don't understand the difference. There's a police chief and there's a sheriff. The real main difference is the sheriff is elected, the police chief is appointed. The sheriff also has to run the county jail. The police chief, some police chiefs have their own municipal jails, but they don't run the county jail. And also the sheriff is responsible for countywide law enforcement. If there's a, a city that doesn't have a, a police department, well, the sheriffs will then police that, that county. But, but basically the sheriff does everything a chief does and then some, uh, a little bit. So when you look at some of the salary studies, um, our sheriff just, I mean, there's a chief in our county that, that makes, um, more than $80,000 more a year than our sheriff does. Um, our sheriff is basically at the bottom. And, um, that needs to be addressed. The problem is, it's tied to the constitution. Uh, so I think it's going to require a constitution change to do that. So when I had discussions with our, our counselor and our county administrator on, hey, what can we do for the sheriff? We started looking at, um, retirement system and, you know, when you talk about total compensations, benefits, those kinds of things. The only really thing that we, that, that we were able to find is that he's got to pay into this, um, retirement coming January, extra 5%. So we should, at the very least, pick that up for him before we address any, uh, any constitutional issues that come down the road. issues that come down the road. So really, that's where this started. I think our sheriff is way, way underpaid, and again, that's something that has to be addressed through a charter or through a Constitution change. But until then, I think anything we can do, number one, to make him as whole as we can on this issue, but also to let him know, even though it's not a whole lot, but the fact that we value him. You know, when we get cost of living adjustments, and those cost of living adjustments we give to all of our employees, including some of the electeds, there's two electeds that don't get those. That's the prosecutor and the sheriff. And so because they're not getting those colas like we're giving everybody else in the county, what is happening, you come with a situation, like I think actually this year, if I'm not mistaken, it'll be close, this year, the undersheriff will probably make more than the sheriff in salary. That's not right. The sheriff should be making, I think, 10 to 20% more than the undersheriff, but that's another topic of conversation. But nonetheless, I think this is very important, that this is a minimum, what we do, and we look for other ways to make both him and our prosecutor more competitive. And it's not particularly the person, it's the position. We have great people in those positions, Zach and Will in those positions, we're lucky to have them, but they won't always be there. But we want to make it a position that's compensated adequately, and that we can attract the good people to run for that position. It's always tricky when you try to raise salaries for electeds, but these are kind of different electeds. They're not like, they're not like us. These are full-time jobs, and they're, knowing a lot about the sheriff's department and what a prosecutor's job is, they are full-time jobs. There's no, it's no nine to five. You don't get a shut off, you know, clock in and clock out, you don't get a shot off the phone, similar to our county administrator's job. You don't get shot off the phone. You're getting phone calls day and night, weekends, holidays. Things are coming up that only you can handle and you have to deal with, and that's just part of the job, and I think they should be compensated for that. So that's kind of what started this whole process, and that's what got us down to at least the 5%. So I'm completely supportive of this and hope that everyone else will be as well. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm in favor also of doing this and the reimbursement, so.
Yeah, also, to me, this seems to be compliant and in the spirit of our Constitution, so therefore, it's not a matter of deserves, it's a matter of this is our constitutional responsibility to go in this direction. So I think that's first and foremost, our responsibility is to the Constitution of this county, and this strikes me as being, as I say, consistent with both the letter and the spirit of that Constitution. Is there anyone else wishing to comment further? Do you have any wrap-up administrator?
I do. So I believe I have consensus, so we will include this in the budget for 2024. Thank you very much. There is one other item that I have received a request from commissioners that you may want to have some additional discussion on, and this is the outside agencies. So what you have in the chart in front of you is, again, the outside agencies, their current 2023 funding, and their request for 2024. And as I mentioned when we went through the general fund budget, what is included in the 2024 proposed budget is the fully funding the request amount of $344,707. And so with that, I would, you know, open it up for discussion by the commission, if there's any direction that you would like to give staff.
Commissioner Whittington?
When it comes to Rebuilding Together KC and Northland Neighborhoods, Inc., I would like to propose that we split it 50/50, and that we give both organizations 52,500. Both organizations do the same work. Difference is, one is not a political organization as much as the other one is. NNI does not have a funding problem. They get community development block grants from the city of Kansas City. Also, they get TIF funding from the city of Kansas City. I don't know how many people know this, but their new facility was paid for with TIF funds. Yeah. And it's leased. So also, they get funding from a lot of other municipalities around the county, and they get PIAAC funds. I don't know how many people know what PIAAC is, but PIAAC is a tax that you pay in Kansas City, and it's supposed to go to infrastructure, parks, public improvements, but every year, NNI gets hundreds of thousands of dollars in PIAAC funding. So NNI does not have a funding problem. I think Rebuilding Together KC does just as good of work, but like I said, they're not as politically connected as NNI. So I would like to see us split the difference. I think Rebuilding KC has demonstrated that they deserve more funding, they have the need. They said their application list has a backlog, so my proposal would be to, since they both do the same amount of work, would be just to split it 50/50 and give them both 52,500.
Sorry, Commissioner Johnson?
So a couple of comments. First on that, and I should have asked you more about this before we got out here, but my concern is, or I guess my question is, do we know why Rebuilding Together KC did not ask for more than just 30?
Well, if you notice, they actually doubled from what they have been historically. So they historically have been around 15,000, and this year, they asked to increase that, you know, and double it to 30,000. So.
And this is just placeholders, right, that we have in the budget until they come back and?
Right. So, you know, again, how this works is, the budget gets approved starting in January, then we reach out and work with the agencies to come before the commission with a service-level agreement, right? And in that agreement is the actual dollars. But I would say if there is a direction by the commission to change them from what they have asked, then staff needs some guidance before we sit down and talk to them.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't talked to them, Jay. I just, since they're, I'm just proposing, you know, throwing this out there. I mean, since they both do the same amount of work, I don't know why we should favor one over the other, especially when the one that's asking for the most amount of money has a lot more public funding sources than the other.
So my, and my other question would be, because they haven't asked for as much, I'm wondering their, about their capacity to use it, their capacity to get work done. In other words, does NNI have more, I guess, workers, people that are out there and actually do some of the building and some of the repairs and stuff they're doing versus Rebuilding Together KC? Did they not, did they not have enough staff to actually, to use more money?
So, so my concern, so here's where, so this is just me, this is my concern, or here's where I think. I think NNI uses the money that we give them. I don't know, I don't know how they use that money. Now, Deb gave us a presentation, and she said, here's what we did. Now, they were going to do those houses regardless of if we gave them money or not. They take our money and they just dump it into a fund. When they came here last year, Dave Mecklenburg told us, well, we use part of that money for codes enforcement in Kansas City.
Commissioner, when you're referring to these people, it'd be helpful maybe to, Deb, nobody's, people watching may not know, so if you could kind of reference their position with these organizations so we know.
Yeah, so one of their board members, Dave Mecklenburg, sent us an email, and he said, well, we're using part of that money for codes enforcement, but that wasn't part of their presentation. So what they do is, they take our money and they just dump it into their, their general fund. So honestly, we don't know how that $75,000 is being spent at NNI.
Okay.
But they do have more staff members, because when they both presented, I think, Rebuilding said they have a director and maybe an assistant or something like that. But NNI, they have, they have their executive director, Deb Herman. Then they have Terry Wolf, who's the chief operating person. Then they have a codes enforcement officer, which I don't know why they have a codes enforcement officer or whatever, if that's a municipal issue. Then they have like a housing inspector, they have, they have a lot of overhead. They have maybe less than 10 staff members, whereas Rebuilding Together doesn't have that.
Yeah, so I'm for, I'm all for whatever's going to be the best use of our citizens' tax dollars for putting it back into the community here. I just don't know what the answer is. I would be curious to know what Rebuilding, and I know you haven't talked to them specifically, but what they would, what they would do with the extra, what we're talking, 20 grand?
Well, they did tell us in their presentation that they had more, they had more applications they could service last year.
Okay. Okay. I have another.
Did you have another, did you have another subject or another topic?
Yeah, another subject, I'll get it later.
Well, let's go ahead, if it's okay with you, let's finish this topic, and then I'll recognize you for the next topic. Yeah, one of the things that I wonder about is, if we're going to go down this road, we probably need to have both agencies in, because if Rebuilding has not asked for the money, I'm a little confused by why we would offer it to them unless there's been a conversation that I'm unaware of.
No, I've had no conversations with any, I mean, he has emailed me asking the status of the budget. And, you know, again, I think the individual who is now in charge of Rebuilding KC, you know, this is, he's just finishing his first year. Last year during the budget process, he was like two days into it, I think. And so.
Can you ask them?
Yeah, I can certainly ask them, you know, you know, if the commission were to provide additional funding, how would they use that? And would they have the capacity to do it? Because again, I'm not that familiar with their organization. I think a lot of things they do, they rely on volunteers.
Yeah.
To do the work, and I think their dollars go to buy the materials and supplies. But let me confirm and talk to them about that.
Yeah, I just, if they could use it, I would rather see us split it equally than just give a organization that's politically connected the money that they ask for when they have a lot of different funding sources that Rebuilding Together doesn't have.
And I would say with NNI, just looking at the projects they've done, they've done, many of the things they do, they actually contract out, because you're talking, they do roofs, right? They do HVAC systems. I mean, they do some substantial work that I think they've negotiated contract prices to have other individuals, companies, you know, and they probably give them a discounted rate because of the programs that they do, but that to me, I think, knows a little bit of the difference in the presentation.
Well, and then another thing that NNI did was, they got money from the city of Kansas City to buy houses, fix them up, and flip them. So, yeah, they have, they said they haven't done it in a year or two because of the prices, but NNI got money from Kansas City to flip houses, so.
The other thing that I wonder about is, if, if I understand correctly, we're asking for Northland Neighbors to give us specifics, where X dollar from the county is going, how it is expended, are we going to use that standard for the other outside agencies? I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent idea. I'm just wondering if that is going to be the standard, do we need to bring the others back in and get similar information from them?
Well, my ping and the others have done a great job in telling us how, how everything was going to be spent.
And I.
And I'm not saying NNI didn't, I'm just saying, we really don't know when they dump your money into, just lump it in with everybody else. You know, University of Missouri told us exactly how that money was spent, Northland Healthcare, and then they even justified the $20,000. You know, the EDC, on the other hand, they were a problem, you know, last year, we had a, it was, it was a, it was a fight to get them to tell us how they were going to spend the money, you know? And then they start throwing crap against the wall, you know, hoping it would stick and.
Yeah, if I could just, you know, really, there are very few agencies that ask for additional funding. One of them was Northland Healthcare, and they did talk about during their presentation, their new program that they had been receiving grant money for, and it's been very successful. That grant is now not available to them, and they want to continue that program, I believe it was with the seniors. And so she, you know, that presentation did talk about the need for the additional 20,000. But almost all the other agencies, other than Rebuild Together KC, and then a slight increase from the Missouri Extension Center, almost everyone asked for the same amount from last year.
Well, Commissioner, Commissioner Lawson's been waiting very patiently, but is it, is it okay for the auditor to go and then come to you, or would you prefer to go ahead and go now?
I have, I just have just a couple of questions.
Okay, so Commissioner Lawson, and then I'll recognize the auditor, and then if there are no further, I'll recognize Commissioner Johnson for another topic under this category.
Okay, so Diana, you're going to go ahead and talk to Rebuilding Together and see what they say. The only question I had, I have no problems with doing what Jason has indicated, but I know that Northland Neighborhoods, they do come up into like Excelsior Springs, Smithville, you know, they'll go all over the metroplex. Rebuilding Together KC, if we gave them additional funds, I'd like to know if maybe they could expand a little bit, and where do they, they do their projects? I really would like to know that as well.
They told us that they are doing it, even though they have KC in the name.
Uh huh.
They are, they even have a contract with Excelsior Springs.
Good.
To provide services there.
Oh, okay.
So they are all over the Northland.
Yeah, confirm that, since you're going to talk to them anyway.
Yeah, and they do Platte County also.
Oh, okay, great, great. And then, you know, see if they, if they really want the money. You know, we don't want to throw it at somebody that might not want it, but from the way he talked, I think he was, would have liked to have had more, but he was trying to be cautious in what he asked for, you know, so.
So again, my question is, if the direction of the commission will be, how would they use the additional funding, and do they have the capacity to do that?
Yeah.
And get that back to you. And again, that would be, you know, sort of in the negotiations of the agreements.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Auditor, I think you wanted to add to the conversation?
Yes, Victor Hurlbert, Clay County Auditor. Yeah, to dovetail on that exact conversation with Rebuilding Together, you know, I'll just add some context, you know, indifferently about, the NNI contract is unique in that it requires at least 50% of their monies, so $32,500 of that $75,000, be spent in municipalities or areas outside of Kansas City. So that's unique to Northland Neighborhoods. I'll remind the commission that there was a state audit finding about that NNI had insufficient documentation to that fact. So we have worked with them over the years, they have provided information about over that amount being spent outside of Kansas City. But I will say, from an accounting perspective, to Commissioner Whittington's point, the easiest solution, I've recommended this to them before, if they can show a specific revenue line from Clay County, and a specific expenditure line, and document that, that would solve the issue, but currently, that's not the case. However, it is very unique and different from all the other agencies. We don't do something similar with other agencies in their contracts, so.
If there's nothing else to add to that particular line of conversation, then I'd like to go ahead and recognize Commissioner Johnson. Are we done with that one, Rebuilding? I think so. I asked and nobody added.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Rebuild KC and have some discussions with them, and depending upon what I find, I'll get back to the commission. And again, we have some time, you know, what I'm hearing from you is, leave both those dollar amounts in the budget, and, you know, we'll work through the details of how it's allocated between the two.
Will you be also reaching out to NNI since we're talking about lowering what they have?
I will.
Have allocated, I should say.
Simply to say that there is some discussion about sort of reallocation of some funds. But I'll wait to hear from Rebuilding Together KC to ensure that they can utilize the funds, right? Because we don't want it to sit idle.
Commissioner Johnson, I think we're now ready for your point.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so bear with me, it's going to take a little bit to get to where I'm going with this, but I want to start with, grab your popcorn, everybody, grab your popcorn and sit back and relax. So when we talk about the budget process, and I think most people here know, but just so everybody at home and everybody else realizes, when we talk about a budget process every year, what really happens, and one of the things that happens is you have all your department heads. And when I say department heads, those are the people that work for our county administrator, as well as the electeds that run their own departments, the sheriff, the prosecutor, so forth. They bring their budget requests to the county administrator. And just so everybody knows, even those other electeds who have their own departments, their budget still comes through us for approval, which is kind of an issue and dynamic, but nonetheless, so it all goes to the county administrator, who gets all these requests, and every time, you have more requests than you have money to give out. And so it's her job to pare down those requests and put them into a budget that she thinks is going to fit the policies and philosophies and the direction that this commission wants to go, and the commission should be focused on what the community wants, what our citizens want. That's why we're elected. The people who elected us, we're supposed to be guiding this county the way they want us to, they elected us to. So, and so she tries to do that, and she has brought a tremendously good budget, I think, this year, really put a lot of thought into, her and the auditor as well, put a lot of thought into what the commission wants, our philosophies, what's important to us, and a great budget. But it's our job now to go through with a fine-tooth comb and see if there's anything that we want to adjust or tweak on this. And as you know, I have always been a big proponent and think the most important thing in this county is public safety, number one, followed by roads and bridges. And public safety is one of those things that if you don't stay on top of that, then you fall behind, and it's tough, it's tough to catch up. And you've seen that with other counties around us, and I don't want to get there. I want to make sure that we're always ahead of the curve. Actually, I think we're still behind the curve a little bit, I want to make sure we're ahead of the curve on public safety. I want Clay County, and I've said this before, I want Clay County to have a reputation amongst the criminals, that you don't want to commit crimes in Clay County, because you're going to go to jail. You're going to be arrested, you're going to be prosecuted. There's a lot of counties that don't do that. They can't do that for a number of reasons. So with that in mind, I know last year, we started really ramping up with the sheriff's department and their, and some of their salaries, and making them more competitive, and we're doing it again this year, doing that a little bit with the highway department as well and their salaries. But I had a meeting with the prosecutor last week to talk with him, and I met with him and went through his, he got a tour of his office, and kind, having been on the law enforcement side of most of my career, I know how the prosecutor's office works. And so I was asking some of the details about caseloads and basically how they're triaging their cases, you know, how they, basically, you get, you can have, you can have five, five stolen cars, five guys in custody for stolen cars, and a guy in custody for murder. Well, the guy in custody for murder is going to be the priority for that prosecutor's office. So they have to deal with that first before they get the five guys that stole cars. So when you get to the point where you're triaging, and you have to take them in priority, and some things have to sit for a little while longer because you don't have enough resources to get to them, that can have an impact. That can have an impact on public safety and on the reputation that, hey, we're tough on crime. I don't want to be there. And if you don't know, the, when it came to budget requests, our prosecutor this year had requested two new assistant prosecutors and two new personnel, what do you, support personnel, thank you. So two prosecutors and two support, so four total. In pairing down the budget, trying to get everybody, you know, a little bit of what they need, we ended up with one prosecutor and one support personnel. I would like to get another assistant prosecutor in there. I'd actually like to get the other prosecutor as well as support personnel, but nonetheless, I'd like to get at least another assistant prosecutor, because I think that's so important. And when you look to- And when you look to, um, you know, you looked at Platte County, I think they have more, more prosecutors, much more prosecutors per population than, than we do. Um, so I think it's important to stay ahead of the curve on that. So, I would like to get another prosecutor. Now, the way this dovetails into this, a prosecutor fully funded, I mean salary and benefits and everything else-
$95,000.
$95,000, that's what I thought. I thought, I thought it was right under $100,000. The EDC, uh, what we have earmarked for the EDC is $100,000, which certainly would pay for that. So, the question to me is what's more important? $100,000 to the EDC or $100,000 to the prosecutor's office for a new assistant prosecutor? I think the assistant prosecutor, and one of the reasons why is because of the issues that I've seen we've had with the EDC. We've, we all know what happened this last year and, and some of the different discussions we had with the EDC, and I just really feel the EDC is not willing to work with us, not willing to work with this commission with some of the requests that we've had. We have a super majority of this, five of the six people in this council and this commission voted for, to the EDC to, uh, allow us to select our own representative for their board. Why they care, I don't know. Uh, but they want to choose who represents us on that board, which I don't think is right. We should have, as, as a commission, be able to decide who's going to represent us on that board. They don't, they don't want to allow us that, and they don't want to tell us why. They don't want to give us any good reason why, just no. Um, yet they continue to, to want, you know, $100,000 a year. My suggestion is that we remove this placeholder for $100,000 for EDC, give that to the prosecutor's office so that we can afford to hire another assistant prosecutor, which I think will be better for economic development in the long run in our city, in our county, uh, safety wise. I think safety trumps everything else when it comes to economic development. So, it would be adding to the economic development that way. And when I say remove the placeholder, uh, you know, if EDC, uh, when they came to us before, they, they, they knew that, that this would probably be an issue, and they, they might not get their funding, and they said, if we don't get it, oh, well, we don't get it. Um, I think that was pretty much a quote. Uh, but if they really want that $100,000, they can come back to us, um, you know, and try and get that place, that placeholder put back in there, um, with the willingness to work with us, maybe, uh, and the commission on, on how this money is spent and how we're represented on that, on the economic council, uh, Economic Development Executive Council. So, that would be my suggestion, is to remove that placeholder for EDC, put it to the city prosecutor, or county prosecutor's office, old habits are hard to break, and, uh, allow him to get his, uh, his extra assistant prosecutor. But, uh, I'll throw that out for anybody else who has any, any, uh-
As we go forward, forward in discussion, I'm going to restate what you said because you had a lot of, you said a lot of things there, but I'm just going to try to clarify, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this. What you're proposing is that this, this commission consider taking the $100,000 under the Clay County EDC and move that to the prosecutor's office under, well, obviously, administrator can guide us on the exact, but largely under the personnel column. Um, now, that is not attached to any negotiations. That would just be a straight-up move of the, of the, of the funding in that line item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that we had the parameters straight so that when we begin discussion, we're, we're as focused as we can be. Uh, Commissioner Lawson, I believe you were the first one seeking recognition. Um, hold on, let me hit, hit your button again, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You know-
Yeah.
I agree with you to a point. I think that, yes, we all, when we ran for office, we all said safety, roads and bridges, and responsibility with our money. It's not that I have a problem with the EDC and giving that money somewhere else in the county, but if we're going to do that... Yeah, I know, I know we need prosecutors, and, and I know that, you know, the, the courts are loaded right now. People, if you're going to prosecute somebody, they may sit in jail for a year before they can even get on the docket to be, be heard. So, I, I know there's a backup, judges, everything. Um, we want our prosecutor's office to be premier. I think we have a premier prosecutor. Uh, I think that he manages his, his whole department extremely well, as does our sheriff. If we're going to do that, I'd like to see that money go towards some of these gravel roads and get those fixed. I mean, it's part of safety, frankly. It really is part of safety. Um, i- if you go out and drive some of these, like I have in the last week or so, on the gravel, it's pathetic. I can't believe that people that pay, like you were talking about the other day, paying $7,000 and $8,000 a year in taxes, and they're driving on a road that is gravel but got potholes this wide and this deep. And, and it, that is unacceptable, as far as I'm concerned. I, it's just flat unacceptable. If we do that for the prosecutor's office, then what I'd like to see happen, no engineer, take that money for the engineer and fix the damn road out there on, um, Rhine King, and get that thing at least chip and sealed for those people. When, when their contractor initially, that, when they developed that land initially, the, the gentleman who developed it had to pay a healthy amount of money to take care of the, the future roads, you know, like they all, everybody does when they, and with the understanding that that road was going to be blacktopped. Now, what he paid back then, and what it cost to blacktop back then, was a whole hell of a lot different than it is today. Nevertheless, you make that commitment as a county, then something better ought to be happening, uh, you know, out there. So, I'm just saying that road in particular, um, is, is one of many, uh, that we need to concentrate on, uh, and I, I'd like to see that get done. Um, I'd also like to know from the EDC if they are going to merge with Platte County, because if, I don't feel, I think that what's going to happen is, the day is going to come when a big, uh, organization comes into town and says, "We want to locate north of the river, 500 jobs, blah, blah, blah," all this wonderful stuff, and you've got a split EDC. Half of the people on the board are going to say, "We want Platte County." The other half are going to say, "No, we want Clay County." Now, how are you going to resolve that? You know, we're giving money to Clay County, and they merge with Platte, and we're already fighting for Kansas City and everybody else to try to get our fair share up here, and now we're going to be fighting to get stuff put over in Clay County as well? So, I think that they, that explanation needs to be brought forward and brought forward sooner rather than later. But, but I, I'd like to see some thought, be, you know, I, I don't, it's not that I have a big problem with it, but I would like that question answered, and then I want to, I want to sit down and say, "Okay, if we can do this, and we can give it to the prosecutor to expand his office, we ought to at least be doing something for the people that are living on gravel roads and getting them some kind of assistance." I, I just, uh, you know, that blows my mind that we, uh, that we have premier homes, if you will, people paying huge amounts of taxes, and, and they're living on gravel, and they're living on bad gravel, not even a good gravel road. So, I, I just, uh, I, I'd like that looked into more deeply before we go approving everything, you know? Um, I, I think that they deserve that fair share and that fair shake. So, and, and, you know, another thing, you take 184th out there that, that we had all the people come in and talk about, I don't see them on the plan to have anything done with their road, and they've been waiting a hell of a long time. So, there you go, there's another one. And, and there's probably five more I can name right, right now, that, that have been begging for somebody to maintain their road and help them, and we're not doing it. I, I just feel like we go out, and I hate to get on my Jag about roads, but it all plays together. We can go out and blacktop that petty road where nobody drives, and I sat on the damn thing. I know nobody drives, even at go-home time, but we can't take care of a couple of gravel roads and get those fixed, but we can blacktop that. I, it, there's no rhyme or reason. I noticed in here that, um, I can't, now I'm not going to be able to remember the name of the road. Um, it's right off of 92, and it is a chip and seal, and it is beautiful. One of the prettiest chip and seal roads I've ever seen. They're going to maintain it and do a bunch of stuff with it next year. Now, damn it, you've got all these roads that are in disaster shape, and we're going to worry about, oh, we got to keep this road good. Yeah, we do, but we also got to get some of these that are in sub-par condition brought up to at least a chip and seal. So, you know, I, I don't know who lives on the road and why it's so important that we maintain that perfectly, but what about all these others too? So, let's, let's, if you want to look at this, let's do it. Let's find out from EDC where they are with Platte County, and then let's, let's really take a hard look at the budget and things that are asked for in it, so we can help get some road improvements done, as well as upgrade our prosecutor. So, when we say safety, we're talking about it straight across the board. Good roads, good protection, good police, the whole nine yards. Uh, that's, that's what we said we were going to do, so, anyway, that's just my thought.
Uh, just for, just for clarification, the process that's been put out publicly is that both EDCs, as I say, Platte and Clay, are going to be looking at, over the course of the next year, whether this is something that they want to do. So, the reason I bring that up is I don't, if that's going to be part of the consideration, it, let me go ahead and put you back on, yeah. Uh, if that's going to be part of the consideration, I don't want to have any false expectations. I don't think the EDC has, has come to that decision yet, uh, and I don't think they intend to until they've done more, more research on it, but I, I, the thing is, I don't want you, uh, waiting for something that it, it, that may well not become-
Could be wild.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm trying to, to give you the, the-
And I appreciate that.
-reasonable expectations on what we can get.
Well, but here's the other side of the coin. When, when we talked again about an additional person on their board, if you remember, one of their big reasons for not doing it for us was because they were going to look strongly at merging. So, since they were going to merge with Platte County, and they would probably have to redo, you know, all of their regulations at that point, then they, they didn't want to do anything yet. You just hang tight, you know? They made it sound as though it was, uh, a quicker turnaround. So, it, it could be September or October or something like that, but, but, you know, I'd, I'd like some answers, more answers on it. And I, I, I really feel strongly, and I think the majority of us feel strongly, that, um, our ask of an additional body on the executive board was not stretching it too far. You know, we've got representation on the regular committee, we don't have anything on the exec. Uh, we've got you, I apologize, I didn't mean it that way. Um, we've got you on there, but, but why in the heck with the expansion of our board, couldn't we have one additional person? I, I don't think that was asking for too much, and I think that every single one of us is more than capable of serving, and just because we didn't pick who they wanted, then they were going to take their toys and go home, is kind of the way I felt about it. So, I really, um, I'd, I'd like some answers from them on the merge, uh, you know, and if they can say, "We're not going to do it till September, or maybe the following year, or blah, blah, blah," I'd like to hear it from their lips to mine in God's ears. So, I don't think that's asking too much. And, um, uh, then, other than that, I think we need to kind of sit down one day, maybe behind closed doors, or however we should do it. I don't know what the proper way to do it is. We can do it here, um, and, and really talk a little bit about how we need to spread this money a little bit further for a lot of things, including roads, as well as our prosecutor.
Uh, before I go to Commissioner Withington, Commissioner Johnson, I just want to get a point of clarification to keep our, our conversation focused. Uh, you, in, in your, um, in your proposal, your discussion item, were you contemplating that if there were to be whatever nature it would take, whatever form it would take, but are you contemplating that if there were, uh, an agreement reached with EDC, that you would then go forward with the $100,000 to them? Or are you saying that pretty much regardless of that, you think that the money should go, uh, to the, to the place that you indicated? So, I just, I just want to get a little clarification, so we've got to focus here, and then I'll, I'll recognize Commissioner Withington to jump in, but please, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, that, that's a great question. So, I, I think that this money should go to the prosecutor's office for a new assistant prosecutor, and then if there would be some kind of agreement that we can all agree upon with the EDC, we'd have to see if there's more money to find somewhere else, uh, throughout the year, um, because this, this placeholder will be gone. So, that's when, um, she's going to have to go to work and crunch some numbers again and see if there's, there's more money to find somewhere else. If there is, and we agree to spend it there, great. And if there's not, then there's, there's not, because this was earmarked for them, and they didn't want to, um, you know, they, they didn't want to, to play the way we wanted to play, so, um, so, yeah. So, is that your question?
I think so. Let me restate it just to make sure, if you don't mind. So, what you're saying is that you are proposing that this money be transferred, um, to the prosecutor's office, and then if there should be a subsequent agreement with EDC, the monies should be located elsewhere. Is that a fair restatement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Commissioner Withington, uh, you're recognized to speak.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Johnson. I think we should remove this placeholder and move the $100,000 to the prosecutor's office. You know, the, um, the, the partnership with EDC, it's not really a partnership, right? It's, so, they just want our money. Um, you know, Commissioner Lawson talks about a second, uh, person on the board. This commission didn't even ask for a second person. We asked just to say who was going to be our representative on that. You know, we could have helped, you know, we had the votes to hold up their funding this past year, but I made the motion, um, over the objection of several commissioners to, that we go ahead and give it to them. I was trying to tell them, you know, "Look, I'll be a team player, but this is what we're going to want going forward." They knew this ask was coming. They didn't care. They, you know, I think it's an ego thing. I think that they just said, "You know what? They're going to get, we'll get the money regardless of what we do." Um, it's, so it's not really a partnership. Uh, they just want our money. I think there's too much uncertainty in the organization's future on the merge. I think Commissioner Lawson's correct when she says, you know, "How's this going to work, you know? We're going to be fighting between Clay and Platte. Platte County doesn't even fund their EDC." So, um, I think with the uncertainty in the organization's future, um, I think it's a better investment to, uh, to put this money into the prosecutor's office. Um, one of the biggest reasons the Royals are looking at Clay County, largest development, uh, potential development in their county's history, is because of the safety. Um, you know, I work downtown, and I made a comment that, you know, anybody looking to leave downtown Kansas City, Clay County was open in a commission comment. Uh, you know, downtown Kansas City, there's a lot of businesses looking to leave because of safety. Clay County is a very safe county, as is Platte, and I don't want to see us get a, um, bad reputation because we, you know, the crime and everything. Um, so, so I'm all in favor of moving this placeholder to, uh, the prosecutor's office, and, you know, I would like to see us have more funding for roads and bridges, but I don't have, I didn't bring my five-year road plan, but, you know, if you look at the five-year road plan, we're spending, is it a million dollars more this year versus last year? And then every year, we're proposing that it goes up. So, I mean, roads and bridges are getting their funding. Um, I mean, it would be nice to have more, but I think that's where we have to then rely on actually applying for grants at Mark, uh, you know, and, and that's another thing about Mark. I don't think we should be going down to Mark and having political fights. Like, if you're going to represent this county at Mark, don't put down there and vote no on, um, funding buses for senior services, for seniors, because you want to- on funding buses for senior services, for seniors, because you want to score political points against the mayor queue because you're mad at the KCATAs. Represent this commission. This commission wants you at Mark to get more money for this county. So we need to be, we need to be in the room, and we need to be working towards applying for grants at Mark, but, you know, that's, that's another discussion. So I agree with Commissioner Johnson. I think this placeholder should be moved to the prosecutor's office.
Before we go forward any further, because I do, what I'm sensing right now is a consensus to move money out of that line item. What I do not hear is a total consensus, and I would like to get more clarification on a consensus of where that money should go, because we've gotten a couple of things, and as you pointed out, we can't spend the money twice. I'm going to go back to Commissioner Johnson, because this is his discussion item, and just hear from him again, but are, or am I mistaken? Are you hearing something a bit differently than I am, Administrator?
No. So just a couple of things, right? So relocating these funds to the prosecutor's office for a position, assistant prosecutor, just recognizing, and Commissioner Johnson and I have had this conversation of, we now have sort of permanently moved that money there, right? Because to make it sustainable for an additional position, and so in the future, if there is a request to fund EDC or some other agency, you know, then we'll have to look within the budget to find those resources. Certainly, roads and bridges are very important to us, and as Commissioner Withington indicated, we are continuing to add money this year. We're continuing to add money each year in the five-year plan. But in addition to that, we're trying to work out, and I agree with you with grants, which is one of the reasons for the engineer position, among other reasons for an engineer position. I'm actually, when I'm surprised at county of the side with the roads and bridges that we have, that we don't have an engineer on staff with that expertise. But we are looking at other, sort of besides grants, one-time monies to help get kind of caught up on some of those roads that we had mentioned. We would love to forward fund, you know, some of the roads that are in the five-year plan to get them done sooner, and then just be more of the maintenance versus trying to upgrade them. The problem is, we have to live within the funding that we have. But there are a couple of things that we are looking at, that we would bring back to the commission to say, "This funding has now become available." You know, our recommendation would be to put it on roads. Certainly, that will be the commission's call, but we kind of have some things planned. One of the things we will be coming back to the commission on probably the first quarter of next year is the ARPA money. We're working with our subrecipients to say, "Where are you with your projects? If you are not going to get them done, if you're not going to get them under contract, we need to know that, because we can pull those funds back." Now, again, our roads and bridges fall under loss revenue, not under the other pots of money. But so we're trying to look at all of those opportunities to see if we can put funding together to bring more money available to the commission for consideration on roads.
I have one question. This is a little bit technical, and I'd like your advice on this. I've seen other budgets where, when an item was swept, but there was the contemplation that it may be rejuvenated or refunded, sometimes there would be a dollar placeholder in there to maintain that place in the budget, as opposed, and again, this is a little bit of an arcane thing, but does that make life simpler? Because Commissioner Johnson had mentioned that there was, that he left the door open for additional negotiations with EDC. If we eliminate that line item, is it easier to leave a dollar in there just as a placeholder rather than recreate it again? Or what, budgetarily, what would be your preference? Does it make any difference at all?
Well, all of these listings are in one line item, so it's really just a matter of how much is budgeted in that line item, and this is sort of the detail that goes with it. So the line item is not going away. What is, would be the reallocation of that $100,000, and I cannot leave it in both places, because that, you know, the budget would be out of balance, so to speak. But so, again, any, any agency could be added to this at the commission's desire. We just have to find the funding.
Well, and the reason I mention, I brought that up was, it occurred to me that perhaps the elimination of the, of that particular thing altogether may send the message to EDC that may or may not be accurate, and that is, there's no interest in negotiating further. And I wanted to make sure that if you wanted to leave the door open, Commissioner, that it would be left open, but otherwise, I'm kind of agnostic on that one. I'm just asking for convenience and process sake.
Yeah, so my thought, I get your point, well-taken. My thought is that we're really not in negotiation with EDC. We've had long discussions this whole last year with EDC. We've voted as a commission, "Hey, this is what we want," and they've just unequivocally said, "No, we're done. We're not interested in that." To the point, they said, "If we lose our funding over this, we're fine with that." So I don't know that we're in negotiations, but so to me, there's no sense in leaving a placeholder. However, if there, if there is something in the future where EDC and the commission wants to work together, then there's always an opportunity that we can look in the budget and try and find some, it's not set aside right now, but we try and find some money somewhere else. Like we said, this money will be gone. It will be dedicated to the, if it goes to prosecutors, it will be dedicated there for an assistant attorney, you know, here on. And so it's not like it's going to come up again next year. So we'd have to find another funding source for the EDC, if that's, if that's what we want to do. And I'm not saying that that's out of the question either, but I don't, I don't know that they're really interested in that, by the way that they've responded to us so far. So I don't, I'm not that concerned that we don't leave a placeholder for them. I think if we really, really, really wanted to work with EDC, then we could find a way to work.
And like I say, that was mainly a question, and my thought process was to allow the commission the most latitude possible. So as I say, I'm rather agnostic on that. I just brought it up as a possible option that we may consider. Commissioner Lawson, I believe you want to join the conversation?
Commissioner Johnson, I don't think it's a matter of us working with them. I think it's a matter of them working with us.
I agree.
But over and above that, I'm going to be what I always try to be, a team player, and I would agree with you on this. But you scratch my back, I scratch your back, kind of a thing. I want you to help me to really scrutinize, to see what we can do with these roads that are today nothing but gravel. I'd like to get a couple of those squared away and redone, and so, yep.
Maybe that's something we can all talk about after the first year, when we meet with the highway department?
Yep, yep.
When it comes to roads and bridges, you had me at hello. I mean, you don't need to convince me...
You what?
You had me at hello. You don't need to convince me of anything. I'm with you on that. To me, they're two separate issues, and we can, we can deal with this one separately from roads and bridges, but yeah, I think we should find a way to fix the roads and bridges.
Did you hear what he said?
And they put together, I think, a pretty good plan. What I don't know, we'd have to look at it, but the particular road, I think Rhine King is one you're talking about. Did you see where it is in the five-year plan? Did you see where it is?
Several years down the road.
Several years down the road.
They've only been, they've only been waiting since, you know, God knows how many. I think they even talked to you long ago, did they not?
So those are one of the things, I know Commissioner Withington is putting together a little subcommittee or whatever, I'm not sure what the legal term is we're calling it.
Yeah.
But maybe that's one of the things we bounce around in there, is, "Hey, are there, in conjunction with the, with the highway department, hey, are there certain roads that maybe need to be bumped up in their, in their position? You know, you mentioned one that you thought looked great, and this one looks horrible. Well, okay, explain to us why this one's being redone when it looks great, and this one's not, and maybe we can switch a route or something like..." So yeah, I'm with you on that. You don't have to convince me of anything. I'll be right there.
Okay, well, he, I've got a witness.
Yep.
So, okay.
Amen.
All right, that's fine. So, yeah, I, have we, have we enough people here, or how does that work? Is this something we have to bring before the commission in the future?
No, what we would like is some kind of consensus today, because again, then, like we did with your request to go to 5%, we would start making those changes. And again, we'll talk about the schedule, but a budget is on tomorrow night, just to do a recap in front of the public, and then the public hearing and the adoption is scheduled for your next meeting, which is January 4th. So if this is something you want to do, then we will need to real... Now, the good thing is, it's all in the same fund. Everything's in the general fund, so that makes it a little easier. But we like to have those final numbers, what are our personnel costs versus, you know, some of our contractual obligations and so...
Yeah, because Meg can't, can't vote on this, so...
Right, and so we have one who's abstaining.
Excuse me, Commissioner Meg.
And so we have four here, we have two commissioners that are not here, you know, but I would say, if the four of you have that consensus...
Yeah, good.
I would say that's, we would move it.
By the way, before we, I'm going to go to Commissioner Withington next. I just want to address the issue raised with the vote related to the KCATAs. There were three negative votes cast that I'm aware of. One was myself, one was Auditor Hurlburton, one was Presiding Commissioner Fricker from Platt County. So just to, just to offer clarity on what the record says, Commissioner Withington.
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm fine with eliminating the EDC's placeholder. You know, and this shouldn't come as a surprise to them. I mean, like Commissioner Johnson said, this really isn't a negotiation. You know, we've, we've shown a desire to work with them. They've basically given us the middle finger at every, every opportunity. They don't want to, they don't want to work with us. But yeah, I think it's something we can address in the future. If they, if, after they decide what they're going to do with their organization, I think they come back and, you know, we'll have a conversation. But at this point, they, they have not shown that they want to work with us, so I'm fine with getting rid of the placeholder and moving it to the prosecutor's office.
Administrator, do you feel as though you have sufficient instruction from the commission to go forward?
I do, so we will work on reallocating these funds and creating an additional assistant prosecutor in the prosecutor's office. I will probably reach out to the EDC and let them know.
Commissioner Johnson, since this is your discussion item, I want to be able to give you the last word. Do you agree with what the administrator's course of action, and do you have any last comments on this issue?
I agree, and I'm done.
Succinctly put. All right, is there, are there any other issues you'd like to bring before us, Administrator?
No, just, again, to sort of recap, again, this has been the budget calendar, and we certainly appreciate the commission's dedication in attending the meetings and reviewing all the documentation. You've had an overview, you've had several workshops. We will do a brief recap tomorrow at the meeting, just because that's your regular meeting, and then announce that the public hearing will occur on January 4th, along with an ordinance, two ordinances to adopt the budget, well, several ordinances to adopt the budget. So if there's anything else or any other questions that you all have, please reach out to me, and we can provide additional information. The only other, since all of you, I just remind you of tonight's celebration at 6:00 for the Liberty High School with their parade and their event having in the plaza that's coming forward. So it looks like it's going to be a great celebration for them, so just remind the commission of that.
Before we leave, any comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner, go ahead and hit your mic, please. Thank you.
When I was walking up, I saw some survey stakes out front. Do you know what those are about?
Did we not tell you that we're selling the courts?
No.
I don't know. Apparently, we don't know, but we can find out.
I saw them all around the square, so I just, I didn't know.
Well, I know, obviously, with the city of Liberty and acquiring those additional buildings, and I know that, you know, since it's all blocked off, I think, you know, their desires to try and do something as soon as possible with regard to that, so maybe related to that.
Okay, I just, I didn't know if you knew or anything, so, all right.
No, so, we'll find out.
All right, thank you.
If there are no other comments from commissioners, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned.
Thank you all.